Evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, April 6, 2015. Would you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, those voices warm my heart. So that takes us to item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of the March 2nd, 2015 minutes. Is there a motion made by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Board Member Powell? Any amendments? Vice Chair Barnes?
Page four, line 195. Vice Chair Barnes, know that apparent had suggested February vacation to be used for makeup days. And my suggestion was April for the next year calendar. So the second line was right. And on to page five, line 236. And it missed the mark. So basically, the last sentence should say, she asked if Merrimack considered setting a graduation date in advance, a year in advance to assist families with out-of-town relatives coming to attend. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Gualyumi.
Page three, line 109. It says, Board Member Gualyumi asked about, and I would change that to the communication protocols regarding parent pickup routine as it related to the April elections. And then, a little bit further down in line number 130, the same page, page three, Board Member, it goes on to state about the proposed 2,000-square-foot meeting space might be an option for a polling site, at least for non-presidential elections. And then to page six, I have quite a few changes in the section beginning on line 282. It talks about Board Member Gualyumi talked of her feeling from frustration to disappointment regarding the outcome, which was the school district's last choice. Then, I would kind of scratch those next couple sentences and say, she stated that the school board attempted to collaborate with the town regarding this and accepted feedback about the roundabout and agreed to the, in the school district, agreed to the traffic study. But when the traffic study results didn't match the original plan, the results were And then, it would go on to say, she felt the number of parents that pick up children from school was diminished. Also, the comparison of the traffic with the elementary schools bothered her as individually they are approximately one-third the size of the middle school and have fewer buses. And then, line 290 is fine, that the safety concerns are the changing of the traffic flow patterns, the lack of visibility with the sweeping curve, the backlog of bus and parent traffic, along with pedestrians and children walking, and the potential of traffic using Old Blood Road to access the middle school around the sweeping curve. I would add, around the sweeping curve, including bus traffic. And that was... I know, I can give it to you in writing.
That might be helpful.
Yeah. And then furthermore, she was disappointed that when the town engineer presented to the planning board, the school district's subject matter expert import and input and operational knowledge was diminished and referred to as perceptions.
Any other amendments? Thank you, Ms. Gualyumi. Beyond that, I just had a few. On page six still, line 270, after it says, with the sweeping curve layout with one stop sign on Madeline Bennett Lane, if we could insert between stop sign and on Madeline Bennett and signify that it's exiting the school, so that it reads, sweeping curve layout with one stop sign, exiting the middle school on Madeline Bennett Lane. And then, the next sentence on 271, if we could insert the word ranked, so sixth ranked option of six possibilities. And then, on line 276 and 277, if we could make that just read slightly differently, comment made that the planning board and Department of Public Works could change it if traffic at the intersection becomes an issue, period. And then, lastly, on page seven, the paragraph that begins on 317 and ends on 320, just to summarize what was contained there, if we could add the sentence, at this time, the town council has declined the school board's invitation for a joint meeting. And I think that does it for me as well. So with that, we will put the minutes of the March 2nd, 2015 meeting to a vote. All those in favor of accepting as amended signify by saying aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you. Which takes us to item number three on tonight's agenda, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone looking to address the board under public participation? Everybody's got an agenda item. Okay, wonderful. I will close public participation, and we'll move to item number four, the consent agenda. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you. Under consent tonight, I have the following teacher retirements. David Delisle, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. Linda Garsis, language arts teacher at Merrimack Middle School. And John Snell, science teacher at Merrimack High School.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Is there a motion? Vice Chair Barnes?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And seconded by Mr. Schneider. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, none. That motion also carries 5-0-0. Which now takes us to something I think you've all been waiting for, item number five on tonight's agenda, focus on Merrimack Middle School. I would invite to the table Principal Debbie Wolfline, Assistant Principal Adam Carragher, Educator Jeff Karin, and many, many students.
So, seventh graders, come on over here. Eighth graders. Should we get... Thank you, school board members and administration, for this opportunity to focus on Merrimack Middle School. Mr. Carragher and I always look forward to our springtime visits when we provide an overview of our school year. We are grateful for the resources, the facility, and the support that the community provides us. Every visitor to our building comments on what he or she thinks is a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility, now 10 years old. Every visitor also comments on the friendly, respectful, enthusiastic students he or she encounters at Merrimack Middle School. We are indeed proud to bring you a representative sampling this evening. Mr. Adam Carragher, Assistant Principal, and then later, Mr. Jeff Karin are prepared to introduce our team to you. Mr. Carragher.
This year, Mrs. Wolfline and I thought that it would be a valuable experience for you to hear about Merrimack Middle School, straight from its source, our students. We asked each of the teams to provide us with one or two students who would be willing to present their experiences in specific subjects here tonight. As you can see before you, there are a number of students, great young men and women, who have agreed to join us for this evening. After receiving these names from our staff, we called the group together, and we prompted them with some basic questions to help them with their thinking in preparation for this evening's meeting. Questions were, why do you enjoy the subject that you are going to be talking about? What would you want a seventh grader to know about the subject? What will you take away from your study of the subject? What was one project or experience that stuck with you? So without any further delay, I will ask our students to share their experiences at Merrimack Middle School, starting over with our seventh-grade students.
So first off is Megan from 7-1. I've actually brought lists because I think you're curious as to who these young people are, and I'm sure their parents and other family members will be proud that you have their names.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Megan Senical, and I am a seventh grader. I am here today to talk to you about health class and what it is all about. I enjoy health class because it helps us in life to understand and know good from wrong. It teaches you life lessons that will help you in the future. What was special about, what was special about it was learning certain information and learning the consequences, then knowing what choice to make. That also goes along with peer pressure and decision-making. Those are two lessons you have. I have experience with peer pressure. One time, my friend asked me to do something that wasn't very good, and I had to choose, do I go right or do I go left? And I thought, was it really worth having a friend that forced me to do something? I lost my friend, but I don't regret my choice, even today. The teachers helped me learn about the subject in different ways, like giving you a visual, explaining it to you in various ways, or helping you one-on-one, and then probably talking about it as a class or group. In this class, I learned that knowing to make the right choice can be hard, and we can learn from mistakes. And we can help others too, to make the right decision as well. We have to learn to own up to our mistakes. It takes a while, but we can do it if we believe in ourselves. I would want incoming seventh graders to know that some things come easily to others, and it's okay to work harder, slower, or even ask for help. It could help you in the future. Thank you.
I'm going to ask each student to introduce himself or herself, and you can even say what team you're from, too. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Zoe Modlinski. I'm from 7-2, and I'm here to talk to you about one of my favorite classes, art. Now, art class to me isn't just, I need to get another A in this class. No, to me, art class is where I can say, yes, I have art class next. I have always liked art, but this year I love it. I know I can agree with my peers and say, we want more art class. It's a place where you can let your creativity flow. But it's not just my love for art that makes the class so fun. The projects we do let us express our thoughts. We get to personalize our own sketchbook covers with traits that describe us, which I have an example of here. For my traits, I wrote, "social, creative, dynamic, fun," just as some examples. Another project is our ZenTangle patterns with our initials. And you get to choose a shape or simple picture and make it unique using vocab words like color, shape, or dimension in our box project, which I do not have with me. As you can tell, the assignments are pretty fun, and you can see why I love art class. I hope the new seventh graders have a lot of fun in art. Some other examples of things I did in art class were this, we were working on our color wheels, and we actually got quizzed on this sheet. And for the quiz, she asked us to point to, let's say, a set of warm colors, which I would point to red and orange, or a set of cool colors, like blue and purple. And it was just not as stressful as a normal test. And we used a lot for, we used a lot of knowledge for dimension, and we used watercolor pencils. And I finished this today with a mask using gradients, line patterns, and, and just colors that are on the opposite side of the color wheel. From this subject, I know I will bring my passion for art up to eighth grade, and I will hopefully continue to thrive in this subject. Thank you.
I'm Heather Roar, and I'm from 7-3, and I'm here to talk about Spanish. I enjoy Spanish because it's teaching me a skill to communicate with others who do not speak English as a first language. What I want incoming seventh graders to know, I want them to know that I'm learning how to speak actual phrases and not just sentences like vocab words in fifth and sixth grade. For example, I did translations like, "you swim in the water is tu nadas en el agua." And for a question, "is he ugly?", es el feo. What will I take away from my Spanish classes at MSS, MMS? I'll be able to have basic conversations in Spanish. And for, how did the Spanish teacher help me to learn this year? So we made Spanish books instead of using like textbooks. So like, we got to like insert stuff in the book and write on our own instead of using boring textbooks. So, we also use like a fly swatter when we're learning our verbs, so we got to hit the lightboard with our verbs on them. And we also made a dance for learning subject pronouns. And then we play a lot of other games to make the learning fun. My experience, I've had positive experience so far, and I enjoy the way she makes it fun to learn. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Harrison Faust, and I'm from Team 7-4. This evening, I'd like to talk about writing, reading, teaching strategies, and technology in language arts. Language arts consists of reading and writing. So we, this year, we have written multiple essays, one of my favorites being the argument essay, because I got to argue in favor of a topic I felt passionate about. And for each essay, our class worked through every step of the writing process, from brainstorming to publishing. We get to do many revisions of each essay with peers and with our teacher. And we keep all of our drafts in our writing portfolio. I love reading on my own, but when I get to read with other people, we get to talk about how we like it and what we think is going to happen next. This year, we have read one novel as a class, and that is The Art of Keeping Cool. For each chapter, we kept track of how the characters changed and what new characters were like. And for each point, we had textual evidence to help prove our point. After finishing the book, we made a brochure for our summative assessment or final project. I'm hoping to do more class assignments for reading in the future. Everybody has different ways of learning concepts, and maybe somebody else's works better for you. We use different teaching strategies for new concepts. One of my favorites is "I do, we do, you do," in which the teacher shows us a new strategy, and she has the group do it as a class, and finally, we do it by ourselves. I really like this because you get to hear multiple opinions on how to do it, so you can find the one that works best for you. At the back of the room, we have posted our learning goals and success criteria, so we can always refer to them when needed and as we're learning them, and how to use them in the future. In our everyday lives, we are using new technology to make everything easier. I even use it to help my homework, and this is true in teaching, too. The data projector and the document camera we have are very useful in learning, because it is easy for me to see the paper and what corrections we are making. And we can also watch appropriate YouTube videos that are catchy, so they're easy to remember. Also, I like how we have the agenda in the morning, so it makes it easier for me to know what I need and when I need it. I'd like to thank everybody here for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope that the language arts program will only get better in the future.
Hello. Wait, is that on? Okay. So, hello, I'm Brody Clark from Team 8-2. This year in science class, it has been very interesting. Learning that the earth layers is pretty fun. There is the atmosphere, the hydrosphere, the crust, the mantle, and the core. One of my favorite subjects so far this year is the elements unit. We learn about the periodic table and the elements and their names and their atomic number, which is also how many protons are in it. We picked elements to research, and mine is tungsten, which is number 74. I have a foldable, which shows the symbol, the atomic number, and the weight. After that, we did a mineral lab where we used different methods to try to determine what it was made of. We made posters of molecules using marshmallows and toothpicks to represent atoms and their bonds. This is one of the posters. Purple marshmallows represent sodium, red ones represent hydrogen, green ones represent carbon, and orange ones represent oxygen, while the toothpicks are the bonds. This is sodium bicarbonate. Recently, we put baking soda and vinegar in a graduated cylinders, trying to reach the top without overflowing. It took several trials, but we eventually got it to the top. To incoming seventh graders, I would say that science is a fun class with many projects and exciting labs. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colby Benoit, and I'm also here to talk about science. So, in eighth grade, we started off the year with a review from the prior year, relearning about the scientific method and hypothesizing. Then we went into density, mass and volume, and how to calculate it, and what it is, et cetera. After that, we started with my favorite unit, the periodic table. That was when, that was what got me enthusiastic about science and more, made me focus more on doing better in it. Once we finished that unit, we moved on to earth science, starting with minerals, rocks, and then moving on to tectonic plates and plate boundaries, as well as earth layers. Now we are learning about how to make a high school acceptable lab report and the format needed, which we did, which we did on the computer to add to our high school computer portfolio requirements. And advice for all incoming seventh graders is, take the class seriously, but also enjoy yourself, and do the, do the homework and pay attention. And I have, this is a foldable that we did on earth layers, and I like these because it's fun to do, you get to like color it and stuff, and it also helps you to remember it in a fun way. And then, this is, I think, pictures that we did in our team. We all got cupcakes of the periodic table, and these are like the best pictures. And this is principal, and this is the entire box of the periodic table that we add all the cupcakes in.
Hi, I'm Sevila Flores from 8-3. I enjoy social studies for many reasons. I like social studies because it teaches you about the past, which helps shape the future. We can learn about the mistakes of the past to help prevent them from happening again. Social studies is special to me because ever since second grade, when I made it my mission to learn where every state is in the USA and its capital, I've been fascinated about the world and its history. Incoming seventh graders should know that social studies at Merrimack Middle School will be fun and interesting. In seventh grade, they will primarily focus on ancient history, which includes prehistory. My favorite projects from seventh grade include a postcard from Mesopotamia, our project on a Greek city, and the Greek alphabet book. In eighth grade, you will learn about American history. This year, we read a novel about child labor during the Industrial Revolution. This book was Counting on Grace by Elizabeth Winthrop. This reading truly helped me comprehend the time period. This is one way my teacher helped me grasp the lesson. My teacher also helped us understand what mill life was like by giving us a task of using our pay from the mill, we had to decide what we could afford for the week. This gave us a real sense of what it was like working in the mills. Our cluster even has its own constitution that us, the students, wrote. This helps us live by the rules because they're rules we have made. Walking away from the middle school in a short few months, I'm going to be sad, but I can say social studies has helped me and has always been my favorite subject. I hope this stays, stays the same as I journey into high school and college. I will take with me many great lessons, including a sense of how our government works and how we've gone from our first civilization in Mesopotamia to a planet with billions of people living in cities and countries. As one great teacher said, she's not just teaching us lessons, she's teaching us life lessons. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Pittman, and I'm from 8-4, and I'm going to talk about math. I am a major math enthusiast, and one of the things I like about it is that it's, it's deeply integrated with science. And basically, you can't have one without the other. And one example in everyday life that I like a lot is pi. For example, the circumference of a circle is pi times the diameter, and the area of our circle is pi times the radius squared. Another example, my friend and I are making a science fiction movie, and we wanted to calculate how, how long it would take for a spaceship to reach a certain point in its orbit. So I ran it through the calculations and got, and got 4.366 hours. It, it was, it was very interesting, and that's the kind of calculations that real rocket scientists use. And another thing that my friend and I did was an experiment to see how, just how loud lunch is, because it is very loud. It, it was not an assignment. We did this purely for fun and because it, we thought it would be interesting. And these are some graphs we made. And we used this thing that we made up called the NM scale, and it's, it's like, one is, you can have a quiet conversation with whoever is sitting next to you, and five is, it's nearly impossible to hear whoever is sitting next to you, even if you shout. So, as you can see from the, from the bar graph, Thursday is generally the loudest, while Monday and Tuesday are quietest. And, and I explain why I think that happens in a conclusion that we wrote here. And yeah, that, yeah, this was not, not an assignment, we did this completely for fun. And I think I will be able to do awesome things with math in the future. And every little bit I learn, I just want to learn more about it, because, yeah, I just think it'll help me get into a good job, and it's, yeah, basically, basically, like any job you will have requires math, from being a cashier to software engineering. And incoming seventh graders, like, I would like them to know that many fun and interesting things can be done with math, and it really helps if you pay attention and do your homework, and you can make a, you can make a really big difference if you, if you know math. Thank you.
So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Jeff Karin to come on up. So as, as you would surmise, we also asked Mr. Karin, who is the director of our, our recent performance of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, if he would pull the crew back together, or as many of the crews could make it, for one last performance. Although it is not the entire performance, they did agree to do a piece from the performance. So, Mr. Karin?
Well, we could do the entire performance. You remember? Hi, thanks. So we try to have a really inclusive drama program at, at the middle school. We, we schedule it particularly so that students can do the musical and still do a spring sport if they want. Student Council always schedules their meetings, so they're happening on days when we don't have rehearsal. And, and it always ends up that we do have such a wide mix of both strong students and struggling students, athletes, art students, and of course, kids from the music department that always want to participate. I know that's true, because we've got students that have been here already tonight talking to you about language arts and art, and, but are involved in drama this year. And the student council president seems to perpetually have a large role in the musical, so I don't know how that happens. So yeah, we're going to do a number from our musical we did this year, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. It features Kaylee McFarland and Maren Francis as soloists, who are our narrators, and most of the cast is here tonight, so we hope you enjoy it.
Wonderful.
I hope the sound works.
Do they need to come forward?
They're going to stand up.
Oh, stand in the spot? Okay. Oh, stand in space, spot, okay.
So our students would welcome questions at this time, if you have any.
Wonderful presentation. I will open this up to the board for comments or questions. Sir, any comment or question? Mr. Schneider.
So, this is great. Um, I actually have a question for Heather down the end. You were talking about Spanish, and what was it that you were, what did you say that was the fun part to say or an interesting part? Something about being?
S L feo, is he ugly?
Is he ugly, right, right. So, right, I, I just wanted to make, I wanted you to say it again, but.
S L feo, it means is he ugly?
Right. Do, do you find that learning things that are different make you remember it better? Will you, will you remember that phrase maybe more than some other ones that you took? Imagine being in college and having your first class of the day learning Jernan, German, and you overslept and having the instructor say the word Herr Schneider hat verschlafen, which means overslept. That's the only word I can remember from college German. So just, it's always good to remember words that are different and words that are unique because they'll stick with you longer. Thanks, this was really good. I really enjoyed, uh, hearing what you did in seventh and eighth grade, because it's very helpful. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Powell.
Well, as always, um, this is my favorite time of year when the schools come and present and, and highlight what's, what's been happening. Um, I was extremely impressed with the presenters and how comfortable you guys felt speaking in front of a, of a large group like this. Um, there are times when I get tongue-tied and don't know what to say, and, and I admire you for, for the courage and, and conviction that you made in, in standing up. I also want to let, um, Mrs. Wolfline and Mr. Krieger know that I heard from them how your educators are reaching out with non-traditional methods. Um, somebody said something about a fly swatter, I think. Oh, we're back to Spanish again, okay. The only thing I remember from Spanish is S O C K S, and that's just because it spells socks. I don't know what it means, but that's the only thing I know. But, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that, that the educators are reaching out in non-traditional methods to whatever it takes to, to get through, and, and, you know, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's what it's all about. That's what we're all here for. And the, the musical, um, my son was Benjamin in the play, gosh, it's probably been fifteen years ago. And I have to tell you, you brought back so many wonderful memories, um, and, and your, your performance was just as strong as, as theirs was back then, so I applaud you, and I, I really wish that I'd been able to make it. I had plans, but unfortunately I got sick over the weekend and wasn't able to. But from what I understand, it was a fantastic run, and I congratulate all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Any other questions? Ms. Gualume and the vice chair.
I mean, I'd like to say thank you as well, um, and my son is an incoming seventh grader, so I'll be sure to have him watch all of the advice that you're giving, and especially, uh, the few of you that said it's important to do your homework. I might, maybe can watch that a few times over, because we'll see if he has it done by the time I get home. But anyways, you guys did great, and, um, thank you for all of your time and all of the work you did all year long, and then to come and present to us, um, and you really did a terrific job. Um, thanks to all the parents as well, obviously, it's, uh, you took the time to come here and all the support and everything, so thanks so much.
Vice Chair Barnes.
Um, well, a couple areas, actually. Uh, first, language arts. I know, Harrison, you talked about a different, a couple of different areas. You talked about technology being integrated into that, um, you talked about collaboration. Essentially, what do you find is the most comfortable part? Because language arts is such a broad, it's everything from your spelling to your, to your sentence structure, to your storytelling. What's your favorite tool to use when you're, when you're developing your language arts projects?
The dictionary.
Dictionary dot com or the, the book with the pages?
Both.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's nice, because we do take notes, and it's especially nice when we, if we have a PowerPoint presentation in class, she always gives us a paper with all the slides on it, so it's always nice to have that to study off of if I ever need to go back and get information. It's, it's all right there.
Gotcha. And actually, I have kind of a, a double question, and it's for Megan and Zoe. Because you came to us and you talked about a subject that you don't get a whole school year about. Um, you only really get one quarter. So tell me, um, you know, how, are you taking art and health now, um, or is it something you took earlier in the year? It's just something that's stuck with you? So what, and I guess, what, you know, what would your hope be for having these family classes? Would you want more of it? Would you want, uh? Sorry, I got you in the middle too.
Well, gym and health are kind of like split, you have two quarters of health and then two quarters of gym. So I think it's like pretty evenly split up between the two.
So, are you taking health now?
Um, I'm taking gym now.
Taking gym now. I just have to check my son's feet, because he's a seventh grader as well, so I'm like, is it gym day? Make sure you're prepared. And, uh, regarding art, I know that's, that's something you don't have a lot of time in your school year with, but.
Yeah, art, we only have one quarter with, and right now, that's my quarter. And there's only about a week left, I think, in this quarter, so this is gonna be our last week of art. But we've done a lot of work in it, but I feel like it's only been like two weeks. It feels really, like it's gone by really, really fast. I wish we had it like for two quarters, like gym or health, but we have other things like facts, uh, that we need to learn about, you know, cooking, sewing, so those are important too.
We have the pillow at home already. Uh, so I guess, uh, the reason I say that is, you know, because you're seventh graders, you're eighth graders, and when it gets to the high school, there's a lot of variety that you could take a whole year's worth. Um, there's a glass, um, stain, the glass program, there's, uh, the, um, empty bowls is, it comes through the art program as well, so there's a lot going on, so. You know, it's nice to dabble, but there's definitely a lot you can do in high school, so keep the passion, and you're gonna get more opportunity to use, you know, more of your time to do that, so. Um, and I actually have one more question, and that is from Nicholas Pittman. And I think it's so great that, you know, of all the presentations, you didn't tell me what you were assigned. You told me that what the subject matter gave you passion to do that isn't in the classroom. And kudos to you for finding functional use outside of the classroom to, to just enjoy the subject matter and take it further. Um, so what, what would you like to do with math, uh, when you grow up? You told about all the things you could do with it. What's your goal?
Um, I think that, um, that I might want to become, um, I, I think I'm gonna want to work at NASA. Um, either as an astronaut or as an engineer, and both of those jobs, of course, require math, and so, um, I, I think that knowledge will be, um, will be very useful to me, um, when I go into that job.
Excellent, and, and that's, you know, that's really what we're here to, to see is you finding, you know, in your coursework, what, you know, what excites you and what sparks you. Because nothing's holding you to being, going to NASA. You could end up going into medicine, and you'll use math just as much there, I think. Or else you'll send the wrong medication doses out, and that'd be terrible. So, so definitely keep that, those math skills sharp regardless of what you do, all of you actually, but, uh, it's a great presentation, and I see the passion in your subject matter, it's, it's really exciting for all of us here, so thank you very much.
Ms. Crowley, our student representative.
This may be self-promotion, but as captain of the math team, we would love for you to come and check it out and maybe drill in next year.
He might make varsity his freshman year.
We're looking for some new people to come on, so definitely check out Science Olympiad and Math Team.
Great point. Yeah, that's true. Um, I want to thank you all for a wonderful presentation, both the students in the front and, uh, those of you who treated us with your wonderful singing. Um, all of the presentations were very articulate, well-spoken, you presented yourselves well, and more importantly, you presented concepts that are very important to this board. You're able to identify the competencies that you're expected to learn, um, either through an agenda at the beginning of the day. Um, I need to look up, uh, Zoe, you were able to point out in your artwork specific things that, that you were, um, attempting to do within the work. You weren't just creating something to be pretty, but something you were learning through that process. We talk an awful lot here at this table about the relationship of, uh, subject areas that, that it's a very interdisciplinary thing, that you can't have math without science and science without math, and that you teach language arts through all of the subjects, not just language arts. Um, and you all conveyed that beautifully, um, in your presentations. Um, I think the thing that I'm, uh, happiest about, though, is, uh, all of you seem to be having fun, um, and in fact, did a project just for the fun of it. We're very focused in making sure that we're creating lifelong learners, that even after you leave the Merrimack school system, that you have a, a joy and a love of learning. And, and it seems as if we're on the right track, we're, we're accomplishing that. So, thank you for the wonderful presentations, you did an excellent job, and thank you for sharing with us. So we'll let the, uh, the rumble of the exit die down a little bit before we move to our next agenda item. Probably to a very quiet room. All right, that takes us now to item number six, concerns regarding the skate park. Uh, Vice Chair Shannon Barnes.
Thank you. Um, as we talked at our last meeting, uh, we had, at our Parks and Rec, uh, meeting, uh, been made aware that the skating, uh, park attendant had been eliminated from the town council's budget for two thousand, uh, fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And in addition, they would be looking to put cameras in, um, to basically check on the property. Based on the dialogue at Parks and Rec, um, I definitely consistently expressed concerns, brought to the board. The board seemed to express a concern as well as, um, administration. So I went back to our last meeting and basically discussed, um, the fact that the skate park will be open dawn to dusk now, um, every day, instead of having the three to eight, um, five days a week as it had been prior to the elimination of this position. Uh, that being said, I asked, uh, Matt what more needs to be done so that we can consider this. Just, you know, limiting the park to being open when school is not in session, which will be weekends, and then three to dusk or eight o'clock, which I think was always the case before. And, um, based on that, and of course, this all hit us because of Parks and Rec. It's not because there was dialogue that came to us as a board or a district regarding these, uh, material changes of, of the activities on school district property that are managed by the town. Uh, so I got an email back from Matt Casparius, who is the Parks and Rec director, and, um, it was from Eileen Cabanel, and I'll read it aloud. Hi, Matt, uh, this is not an informal issue. If the school board would like to have the skate park closed at certain times, they need to vote on the specific request. The school board chairman should then put in a town council agenda request for the council's consideration. So that's why I asked for this to be an agenda item tonight. Um, at this point, I feel that, um, it's in the best interest of the district to have the skate park closed while students are in place. And we do have three schools to consider, um, the straight walk across to Master College Elementary, uh, Ma- uh, Master College Upper Elementary, and of course, the high school is just down the walkway. Uh, the things that I shared my concerns about are, if we have students, um, and, and citizens at large, they're hard to blend at eighteen years old, seventeen years old, sixteen years old. It's hard to delineate from a camera who's who at the skate park during school hours. I really think it's in our best interest not to have, um, the community at large on this property when school is not in session. Uh, that being said, I think I would like this board to consider, uh, putting, you know, basically requesting that the town council not have the skate park open during school hours, and, um, we would have to put it on the town council agenda. So, uh, my purpose here tonight is to actually make the motion to, um, request that we go on the town council's agenda to request they close the skate park during school hours. And you can consider that my motion if you feel so.
We will consider that the motion. Um, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Schneider.
A second for discussion.
Okay. Would you like to speak to it further?
Um, really, I think the, uh, there's a lot of concern. Um, obviously, we talk about safety, we talk about security. We talk about the fact that the skate park, um, attendant had really created an environment of structure and responsibility and safety. Um, those things are not going to be readily at hand. We're relying on cameras and relying on people to be looking at that camera when things are happening. So obviously, you know, that can't be, that's not going to be a hundred percent covered. Um, I think it's in our best interest and, and our duty to, uh, protect the students of our district that, that we, uh, consider keeping the skate park closed during school hours. So, and I wish this town council talked to us prior to, uh, making such decisions, knowing that we had students to consider.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. Schneider.
So i- it's kind of interesting, because I have personal feelings, and then feelings as sort of a board member is the, is sort of the governing body for the district. Looking back at the history of how the skate park became and how a skate park attendant came into, into being, I definitely see the value of, um, the addition of the skate park attendant to help keep things in line. Um, you know, whether it's on the school property or whether it was someplace else, there was, there was this need, and then, um, that the skate park attendant came out of that need, the need, the result was something that was much more steady-state. My understanding and listening to and reading some of the minutes when the decision was made to defund the skate park attendant, there was a belief that Merrimack was one of only two towns in the state that had an attendant for a skate park. So it was not clear to me whether it was the rationale behind defunding it was because, well, nobody else does it, so why should we? Or is it the right thing for Merrimack to not have a, an attendant at the skate park, given the dynamics of the skate park? I know that the town council made that decision based on the recommendation from Park and Rec's director to, to not fund it. I personally didn't feel it was appropriate, but on the other hand, the town council, by the, by our, um, our granting the, um, um, thank you, the easement, I knew there was a word there. Granting the easement, they're in charge of doing it. Granting the easement, they're in charge of doing it. So that's, that I believe is their responsibility. So in the very same way that the park, the DPW is going to put a stop sign where we thought it was not appropriate at the middle school, it's up to them to be able to react should it not work out properly. Now, that being said, it brings into question as to whether we as a board need to take any action based on the use of those facilities that are over there, because it's not just the skate park. You've got the skate park, you've got basketball courts, you've got tennis courts. Now, the tennis courts are sort of in bad shape, but the basketball court is still functioning. My understanding is the skate park is the only part there that had a very specific timeframe. Anybody could go anytime during dawn dusk to go and play at the basketball court, if they wanted to for a pickup game or whatever. So, the question really comes in my mind is to whether we as a, as a body should be dictating to the town, the hours of which somebody could be there. Like for example, if a skate park attendant was going to be there and they decided to extend the hours during school, let's assume it was flipped the other direction, would we as a board still feel the same way, or would we feel the attendant was acceptable? So for me, while I personally don't agree with the town council's decision to do what they did with the attendant, I'm also at a bit of a loss as to whether we as a board should take a position on what should be done in terms of hours of operation of that property. So, I can't say one way or the other if I'd support the motion now, but right now, I'm sort of on the edge, so.
Further discussion, Vice Chair Barnes.
Andy, I did hear that one of two towns discussion as well, and the one thing we need to consider is, does that other town have a skate park on school district property? Does any other town have a skate park on school district property? I think it's a fairly unique thing, if you look at, it's usually in the center of town in a sports or park complex. It's not at a, at a school complex that has three different, you know, schools in it. You know, which, you know, gets us well over a thousand children. So for that reason, I'm looking at our responsibilities here. It would have been nice to have been told, other than my seat at Parks and Rec, it would have been nice to be asked. But at this point, we can ask, it's not saying that we're going to get anything out of it, but we, we're not getting the dialogue back and forth, and this is on school district property, easement or not. I think to your point about the basketball courts, they aren't the most used because they're not maintained well either. When they are used, the nets that were put up on those rims are put on by local residents who liked nets, and, because the town didn't provide them. The one thing you will have to know is, of course, it's much closer to the road and easily visible. So if people are coming and going, it's easier to see what's going on there. The skate park has, is set back, it has corners and tucked away areas where activity could happen and it would not be in clear line of sight for any building. So that was the other reason why it's so specific.
Further discussion, Ms. Gualyumi.
So if you can remind me just what the hours were when we had the attendant?
It was open three to eight. It was closed on Wednesdays. And but it was open, it was open, I think it was closed Tuesdays, Wednesdays, I believe. It was open three to eight, most days.
Three days a week.
And then, weekends, it was dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk, okay. And then, but if it was closed during school hours, it would, the hours would be increased from what it had been?
And they are, it's been agreed that they were, that that's the plan, they're going to open it dawn to dusk, so they only have to open it once at dawn and close it at dusk.
I mean, I, I agree with you, I'm not in favor of having the school district property open to the public during school hours. I think, I think the safety concerns are valid. So I, I'm, I have a few things going through my mind that are, are again, kind of the personal versus the school board responsibility, and, I mean, I guess the other thing is, that I ask myself is, that it's kind of segregated a little bit away, so it's not like, let's say, the track, which is right behind the high school, it's kind of off to the side, even though it's on property. So I'm kind of weighing that in my mind, but I'm leaning towards supporting, I think, the safety of kids. I, I know, I have no personal contacts whose children have been badly injured with the skate, in a skate park. And without the attendant there to open it for so many hours, I mean, it gives me some concerns just as a citizen. So I'm weighing a lot of different things right now, but as far as it relates to the school board and the school property, I, again, you know, there's, those safety concerns are kind of looming and kind of taking a priority for me.
And honestly, if we had had a joint meeting, I think it would have been different. But now we have to get on their agenda, so that's why I wanted to bring it up at the first possible meeting that we had, so we can decide, and once we do decide what we want to do, if we want to get on their agenda, we still have to have time to do that, so.
Mr. Powell, you had your hand up.
While I hear the, the concern that both you all have brought up about safety, ultimately, it comes down to the fact that, that we, the district is under a whole harmless agreement under the easement. The district is in, holds no responsibility whatsoever if anyone gets hurt. Now, that doesn't mean that I don't care if anybody gets hurt, I, you know, yes, I do have that same concern. But as far as, as what I feel is the board's job to watch out for the best interests of the district, we have that in the easement, and the fact that the town has said that they will cover anything and everything that happens, and that their responsibility is for the, maintaining the safety of that park and everyone who uses it. I don't think it's the school board's purview, if you will, to armchair quarterback what the, what the town decides to do. We don't contribute to the funds for that position that was there. I don't believe we asked for that position to be there in the beginning. I, I could be wrong, but I, I don't know, it just seems like it's, it's been there. So I, I don't, I, I don't think we have a dog in this hunt, to be honest with you. We can certainly express our concerns, if that's the, the pleasure of the, of the board, the majority of the board, as to, you know, what we feel should or should not happen there, but I, I don't think it's appropriate for, for us to take a stand on whether there should be an attendant there or not. If that were the case, then we should have had this discussion during budget season and provided funds for an attendant at that point.
Vice Chair Barnes.
I'm going to roll back, it was not about the attendant. That's not our, you're right, it's, we have nothing to do with it, and it did not come to us, and did not go through Parks and Rec, or else I would have given you a heads up before budgets were vetted. It was after Parks and Rec had, the budget was presented and the position was cut, I brought to your attention, because that was the first I knew of it, even going to Parks and Rec each and every month. My, my, my motion is to put an agenda on the town council's agenda, agenda item on the town council's agenda to request that they only have the park open outside of school hours. That was my motion, it has nothing to do with the attendance, I wanted to be clear on that. So as you decide to make your vote, you know what you're voting on.
Mr. Schneider.
So the first thing is, is that if this were to get, get voted on, approved by this board, we need to do it for the whole unit, not just the skate park. If we're saying that there's a tennis court, a basketball court, and a skate park there, and we're going to put limits on when people can be there, I don't want people being able to play basketball at one o'clock in the afternoon, but not be able to use the skate park till three, because that, can I finish, please? Because in these, the documents that Chris you sent, or in the original easement, it talks about the tennis court and skating facility, for example, that were add-ons, will be open to the public at all times, and a permanent site stating it'll be public area. Now, one of the things that's interesting is, this is the, the third page dated four June nineteen seventy-three from Joseph Quinn to the Board of Select, or from the Board of Selectmen to Joseph Quinn in the economic development in Concord. Basically saying that when these, when these things are open, they'll be open at all times. It's, it's the third page in, in the exhibit that was sent. Now, I can't find any other audit trail for additional things that were put in here and how long they would be open for. But there is communication that talks about, from the town to the state, saying that when these things are built, they'll be open at all times. And I think the skate park was sort of modified as it went along. Because nothing is going to be monitored, other than video at this point in time, the only way I would approve is, accept this as if we basically said, it's either all or nothing in my mind. If we're going to do this, do it for all the sections over there, because frankly, the skate park, while it's a fenced-in area, and there's, there's more nooks and crannies people could not be visible in, it's the same guideline. It's unsupervised area where something can occur during the day, whether it's pickup basketball game or something in the skate park. Or somebody going into the tennis courts and doing something there, like running a remote car or something like that, in my mind, so. And it would be hard to segregate somebody being over there, whether, whether they're doing it or not. I mean, that, that's the slippery slope we're dealing with if we're talking about, as a school board, us being concerned at this point in time. Now, I will say that in listening to the discussions, the town felt that the monitoring that was going on, that the police would monitor it during the day. So the same way we have to trust the police on the voting day, we sort of have to trust that their monitoring is going to find this sort of stuff during the day if something occurs, and could cause the police to come back to the town council and say, "Look, we need to restrict this back to the way that it was." So, this, this again, is, is not clear cut, I can see, Shannon, I understand the reason you want to do this, bring it back to three to eight, since it's not supervised, but at the same time, I don't know, I'm just, it's, it's difficult for me to support.
Can, before we go around again, I, I'd like to ask a clarifying question, because I'm, I'm, and maybe it'll help the discussion. What I'm trying to understand is what activity would take place on the skate park or the property as a whole that might not happen in any other park around town, and what the risk is to our students who are self-contained across the street or down the road, that, that wouldn't happen in any other park? Can, can someone explain what threat we see here? And, and the distinction, other than the fact that it's on easement property that happened to be the district?
Well, I'm going to, I'll answer yours, but first I just wanted to give Andy the clarifying point. That's why I raised my hand, that's going to wait for you to finish, I wanted to give you a clarifying point. Tennis courts are inaccessible, they're locked by a padlock and chained. So that's not something they can even get access to, so I wanted to make you aware of that, that that's not an area that's even accessible to the public at large.
You still got the basketball courts.
You do, no, that's fine, but I just, you kept going back to the tennis courts and they're not accessible to the public and they're unsafe, and, and they're locked out. So that was the point where I was going to make later. To your point, I think there's always the safety concern regarding the activity that's happened at skate park, I'm not just talking about. There, you, there was a concern of drug culture at one point, there's, honestly, when I was, my first year on Parks and Rec, there was a buck can. They're smoking on school district property, and there was a buck can placed there, so they weren't littering while they were actually in a drug-free school zone, smoking. So it's, they're not, you know, it's not, it, they're doing things that are not school district allowed per RSA even. So, you know, that being said, with less monitoring, I think there's more opportunity for that to happen. The other thing, skate parks, skate park specific again, if you look at it, it's depth. So where they go in, there's a little hut area that has a coverage, like a tarp with a bench. So that's very hard to see because of the shading. Then you go back, and you're in a tree line, when you go back into the tree line, it's more difficult to see from the road, people that are along that back part of the skate park, it's not easily visible from the road. So even if you're patrolling and driving past it, you're not, you could actually keep from being seen if you wanted to keep from being seen. My concern is, these are people that can be there, and then wander on to, wander ten feet and be on the school district playground. Because you're dealing with the Master Cola back entrance, you're also dealing with the JMU's playground in that area, and you're dealing with fields that are used for baseball and softball. And then of course, you know, it's the walkway for the, the students that are driving in. So I really think that you're, you're mingling, again, we talk about not mingling public at large and our students, and this gives opportunity to do that.
I saw hands, Ms. Gualyumi, did you have your hand up as well? Okay, I'll come back to you.
I think another thing for consistency's sake, is like the track, for example, is not open during school hours. Also in the same vicinity on the school property, so if all of a sudden now the, the skate park is open, why can't people go to the track? What's, if it's, so for consistency, it also makes me think that it, it might be a prudent recommendation, while realizing this is not, to what Davis said, you know, this is, we don't have the oversight over this, but I think to advocate in that way makes sense.
Mr. Powell.
Can, I get a clarification, I thought the track was open during school hours, and that's why we had that sign put out there that said, "Public can use this lane", and, and keep these lanes open for high school use.
I think it's when it's not being used, so in other words, for gym classes and that kind of thing, it, it's up to us to use that, but to say that no one is ever there, I don't think there's any posting that says such.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I thought, and, and I don't mean to-
I think people avoid it because they think school's in session, and we have a lot of students out there at different times, but to my knowledge, there is no posted signage.
Okay.
That I might switch my position based on the consistency argument.
And Shannon, I'm not meaning to call you on the carpet for that, I just remembered a heated discussion ten plus years ago, when the track was, was relayed, of that very same topic. And, and that's why it, it popped in my mind. Because there were, there was, there was thought at that time to completely close it off from the public during school hours, and only have it open during non-school hours. And, and I remember us going back and forth on that, and that's why the sign was put up for the usage.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think the track was open during school hour, so I think that no matter what we do, I think it needs to be consistent across our, our properties.
Absolutely, I, I hadn't thought about that. And I completely forgot what my first point was before that, no, I got it. Okay, with the scenario that was, the possible scenario that was presented of, of undesirable elements, if you will, only being ten feet away from the upper elementary and the elementary school, well, what if they're on the other side of the property at the church? Doing things that they're not supposed to be doing, or any other property around town, and they come onto school property, what's, what's the difference? We can't control that, we can't control Reed's Ferry situation being out there, there's fields all over Reed's Ferry, and dugouts where people could be hiding out doing things that they're not supposed to be doing. So I don't see how we can make a valid argument here that just because the skate park doesn't have somebody there, it should be locked, and we shouldn't allow the town to do what they want to do with it.
All set? Vice Chair Barnes.
The difference is we own it, that's the difference, right there, period, we own it, it's our property, and so in that-
We don't own Reed's Ferry.
We don't own the church, is your first one.
No, we don't.
We don't, but Reed's Ferry, we should patrol it, it's our property and we should patrol it. If people are doing that, they're on our property and we have, our, it's school district property, and we should be, we should be managing the safety of that. If they are in a dugout, I'm certainly hoping that we're going to investigate that and have them removed during school hours. So it's, it's our responsibility to patrol our own properties, and, oh, this is our property. The Our Lady of Mercy is not our property, so we don't have the same rights and opportunities, but where we do, we should take them.
Mr. Schneider.
So, looking at this pragmatically, we don't know, we, we could probably go and find out before there was a skate park attendant, what the hours were at the skate park. It was likely dawn to dusk. Don't necessarily say that's the right way, although I don't know for sure, but let's assume that it was. And then a decision was made by the town to put a skate park attendant in, and put the hours to three to eight, so that they could have somebody in a managed period of time. Whether they chose three to eight because it was after school hours, potentially it was, I don't know the answer to that question. But yet every other location, other than the skate park, was dawn to dusk. There was no restrictions on the basketball courts, track, other fields, and it's up to the school or whoever to be able to find out whether anything is going incorrectly, but it's town-owned land that residents can use. My, my belief is the logic the town council used said, if we no longer have a skate park attendant on certain hours, then the assumption was to fall, let it fall back to the guidelines for the rest of the parks in, in town, of which we ran the easement to them, but it happens to be on school property. So, at this point, this is where I go back to my personal feeling is to, do I agree with the town's decision to do this? No, because I think there was a reason that the, that the skate park monitor was put in. However they have chosen to put video monitors in instead, to monitor the situation, have a direct feed to the police station, that's the way it's set up, so the police can monitor, that's their decision as a body to monitor the situation from dusk to dawn. That's their decision as a body to monitor the situation from dusk to dawn. They have said in their discussions that if there's a problem, they will reopen this to look at it. In the same way that they've said to us, they'll reopen the DPW decision to put the sign down at the middle school. I'm just concerned of the bit of a slippery slope is if we pick the skate park only to restrict its hours. But don't do anything else to the other plan. I said before that I would want it to all be one or the other. But given all the other situations, and Davis is right about the history of the track, I remember this now, keeping it open for somebody to use it. We have to have a real good reason to not allow the access during school hours for one piece, but still allow it for all the others. So as a result, while I understand Shannon's concern, I'm just, I'm hesitant at this point without something, some water under the bridge and some examples. To prove, I mean, because what we're doing is we're second guessing the town's decision, saying, we believe that your decision to monitor via TV versus a skate park attendant is wrong. You know, okay, we can say that, but do we have any proof to show that it's wrong? At this point, no. I mean, do I hope that something doesn't happen? Yeah, but at this point, I mean, it's, that's where my head's at right now with this, so.
Thank you. Ms. Gualyumi.
And I just wanted to clarify that Shannon's motion again was not about the second guessing per se, but it was about the hours. Defined hours, not during school, school hour, sorry.
But, just to clarify that point, why? If it was three to eight with an attendant and the attendant is now gone, but video monitoring's there. And they back the park off to be the same hours that every other park on the property is, what is the reason that we're requesting that they do that for?
I was just making a clarification based on her motion.
No, 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 I know, but that's the quandary that I'm in right now, that is the quandary that my brain is in right now.
Vice Chair Barnes.
Andy, I'm not against your position regarding, you know, having after-school hours before the Ogara Recreation Area. To be after-school hours to dusk, I don't think that's a bad thing at all, so I'm okay with that, honestly. When it comes to our track, we as a board can discuss whether we feel, again, we've been very consistent about how we are not. We do not want the general public and our students mingling under our stewardship. So for that reason, which is during school hours, you know, we're doing a lot and taking extra steps when it comes to things like elections. We're closing schools, we're adding police at polling sites when schools open. So I think we need to do more as a board, just because ten years ago, which I think things were very different ten years ago. We talked about having a track available during school hours, that might not be the position we should be taking right now. It's, but right now, what we have to discuss is what the town council has onus over, which was the agenda tonight. Can we have further discussions on our own properties? Absolutely. Is it prudent to do so? Absolutely. But what I'm saying now is, do we want to ask the town council to open dialogue? And I think really that's the point, we need to have dialogue when these things come up, we're not having dialogue. And an agenda item will allow our concerns to be discussed. We don't have a joint meeting, there's no time for it now, a joint meeting, so at this point, we need to get on their agenda if we want to communicate with them. Or they need to get on ours, but again, they didn't want to call the joint meeting, so they don't have anything to communicate with us right now, I feel we do have something to communicate with them.
Mr. Schneider.
The only issue I have with this is that if we decide to vote to put an agenda item on the town council thing. We all have fairly somewhat differing views on this topic. So what would the position of the board be at the town council meeting should this agenda topic come up?
Just from a process standpoint, it would be stating the motion as made. That we want the hours restricted to three to eight PM, as opposed to dawn to dusk, right? I mean, that's all that could be said in terms of the position. Mr. Powell.
I called a question.
Okay, I haven't actually had a chance to weigh in as folks have discussed it. I think it's unfortunate that the decision was made without recognition of the landowner who granted the easement and on whose property it sits. As a major, a butter, and what we do on a day basis in educating the kids. That said, for me, this comes down to the agreement that was put in place. That provided the town the easement and the right, as it says, to maintain and manage the property. And to me, staffing, hours of operation, all fall into the jurisdiction of management of the property. The reason I asked about what sort of threats we see existing on the property. Is to really understand what it is that might exist there that would put our students at risk. Recognizing, yes, those are proximate lands, the basketball court and skate park are across the street from the upper elementary school. But the activities mentioned were not different than could happen in any other public park within town during those hours of operation. And the risk is that they would come on to the property in perhaps an intoxicated state. Which is a crime whether they come in through the playground or they come in through the front door. And to me, it needs to be policed, it needs to be addressed. If someone's breaking the law there or anywhere in town, it needs to be enforced. But to me, this is really about the agreement and what we've told the town they're allowed to do. I regret that they didn't come to us, but they technically didn't have to either. In terms of the whole property, I don't know if folks noticed, I got a draft copy of, or the current copy of the agenda for Thursday's council meeting. If folks haven't seen it, the status of the Ogara tennis courts is on Thursday's agenda. So in terms of their entire disposition as it relates to the courts, the property, et cetera, I think there's more to come on all of this anyway. And so, I'm not going to support the motion, although I certainly understand the intent and the desire in putting it forward, which is sincere. So with that, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to request an agenda item for the town council. To request to restrict the hours on the skate park to three PM to eight PM signify by saying aye, opposed? The motion fails, one, four, zero, with board members Gualyumi, Schneider, Powell, and Ortega in opposition. Thank you. Mr. Schneider, you have something to say?
I could do this on a new business, or I could do it now.
Okay, I'll entertain it now.
We as, we as a board have speculated quite a bit at this table, bouncing back and forth in this agenda topic. And we also know that the school, the town council is having an agenda topic, learning more about what they found out. I would like to do two things, one, I would like to see what the town council has to say at this upcoming meeting. I also believe that it might be prudent for us, I mean, Shannon talks about going to the Park and Rec meetings and hearing about this. I think that it would be good for us to reconvene in two weeks to talk about the results potentially of that meeting. And to me, the next step honestly is if there are still concerns, and I still have some about some of the decisions that were just, were made. I'd like to request an agenda topic here and have the Park and Rec director come to our table and explain some of the rationale that was used. For why he felt that it was this way, and so we can ask direct questions. And maybe get some history, maybe make sure that there's some history on the creation of the skate park and things like that. Because I mean, I don't want Shannon to think that we're not listening, but on the other hand, there's a lot of data here that I wasn't sure about. And there's those unanswered questions about the ongoing easement and the resolution through the state. So I'd like to let that come out and I'd also like the opportunity to really ask the Park and Rec director. And if someone from the town wants to come, if the town manager wants to come, that's fine too, but I'd like us to be able to ask them directly, so we can all get the data.
Thank you, that's a good point, we'll do that. Mr. Powell.
I agree, it's a good idea, but I don't know if it's appropriate for us to ask the Parks and Rec chair or director to do it. Because it's, I think it's more appropriate to ask the town manager to come and represent instead of-
Go through channels.
Exactly, instead of one of their employees. So, basically because it's her budget that was given to the selectmen to vote on.
Right, understood, again, I get that. My only hope is that the Park and Rec director would come or his input would be taken, because my understanding is their decision was based heavily off the recommendation. Of the Park and Rec director that didn't feel it was necessary, so that was my reason for saying it that way.
And certainly if there are issues that need to be brought to the attention of the town that actually occur, somebody mentioned. You know, if we see something after this is rolled out, certainly we need to raise those promptly and get in front of them. And share those concerns. All right, so that now takes us to item number seven, guaranteed health insurance rate for 2015, 2016, Business Administrator Chevanel.
Thank you, this is nearly not as enjoyable as seeing an eighth grader using a term of summative assessment here. I could tell Mark was getting a bit nervous, you know, looking down the road here. But anyway, our guaranteed maximum rate increase is usually what we build the budget off of, everybody knows that. And our actual rates come in the spring, if you can qualify that this is spring pretty soon. It was four point four in the budget and in reality, we are dealing with four point four, so there was no change, so. The only change that we'll have will be in the demographic mix in the people, those who come and those who go. We might wind up on the better side or we might wind up on the worse side depending upon that demographic, that's it.
Great. Mr. Powell.
Matt, I know the rest of the board doesn't have this, but I just happen to have it because it was part of the health cost care, health, the H triple C.
Healthcare cost containment.
Thank you, it's the Nyquil, I'm sorry. And I see that the majority of our people are at the five point two percent increase. And, you know, it just, I don't know, it bothers me that one where we only have three employees. Has taken a jump of sixteen point seven percent, which causes it to go up to four point four, you know, to net out at four point four. Excuse me, are they figuring this based on the actual number of people that are in each plan? For instance, three people at sixteen point seven percent, or is it the total potential population that could be in there, that they're figuring it on?
The total potential population?
Like say, for example, because I hate math, let's say there's a thousand employees that are possible that could be joining the health plan. Are they figuring, okay, if all one thousand people join the J Y plan, it would be a sixteen point seven percent increase? Or they base it just on the actual number there?
I think that they, yeah, thank you for clarifying.
I'm sorry.
They base it, no, 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 I'm sorry, they base it on the actual number of people who are in that particular group.
Okay.
To get to the, to get to the four point four. You notice the Matthew Thornton went up five point two, the, I don't have it in front of me, but the Blue Choice was probably three point something.
Three seven, yeah.
Three seven, and then the J Y, which is, I think they want to price people out of that market, so hence the, hence the increase. And then you get the average of four point four. I think what they do is when they look at the value of the plans. They place a relative value of one plan against another. And that's why you see the HMO going up at a higher rate at this point in time than the Blue Choice. Because the plans are getting more and more alike to the point where I think at some point in the future. Point of service will probably go away and we'll all be HMO or some variant thereof, so, just my opinion.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item number eight, other correspondence. Before I open it up, I had a couple of pieces of correspondence, one was with a parent at J Mews. With questions about the smarter balanced assessment. And the other was Merrimack High School student and a discipline issue there. Is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Vice Chair Barnes.
I got a call from a parent with kids in both the high school and the middle school, asking what the school does to address drug concerns in their buildings. And so, kind of went through what we've always gone through, obviously Officer Murray being in the building. And the Merrimack Safeguard website and some of the resources there to talk to her kids about, that are available to talk to her kids about. You know, the drug use in schools and what we're doing about that, so it was a good opportunity. And encouraged her to look more into Safeguard as a parent who is proactive with talking to her kids about drugs, is a perfect person to be on that kind of committee, so.
Great. Any other correspondence to come before the board? Comments? I'd like to just make one comment. Folks may have noticed the disappearance of an item from the agenda tonight as discussed at our last meeting. At our last meeting, we had tasked the superintendent to create a revised calendar. That looked at starting students sometime the week before Labor Day, in part based on feedback from parents. In the course of so doing, we've discovered a potential, another contractual constraint in so doing. And so the board will be looking at this and in fact has an agenda item under non-public to discuss the potential of a sidebar negotiation in that regard. So if you're watching and wondering, why aren't they discussing the calendar, I would just let you know that that's the reason. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item number nine, new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we'll move to committee reports. As always, Ms. Crowley gets to go first.
So mine is very short and sweet, this week is Spirit Week. Today we had the most participation in the history of Spirit Week and our biggest percentage was eighty-nine point six seven percent. Which was the freshmen that came out first, unfortunately. Usually in other years, it has been in the forties to fifties, so this is very exciting for us. And we're also doing a fundraiser called Penny Wars, where you can place pennies in your grades bucket for positive points. And then other coins in other people's buckets to decrease their points. And all proceeds will be donated to the Easter Seals.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Mr. Schneider.
Yeah, last Wednesday was Merrimack Safeguard, they didn't have a meeting on the normal Thursday. There were conflict with, there was an event that was going on with Merrimack Safeguard, with the other parties that were there for Beyond Resistance. And there was a sort of a, an event that was going on, so they had a one-off meeting on Wednesday. I didn't attend, but primarily what it was, was to, I think I mentioned last time, there's three subgroups that were being created. Around school, police, and education, no, school. Education, police, but what was the third one?
Education, police, and youth.
Youth, thank you, the youth. So it was to create essentially the structure of the sub-teams this- Youth, thank you, the youth, um, so it was, was to create essentially the structure of the sub-teams, um, this, this time. So, it was a very focused meeting, um, that had partial attendance at, and then the next meeting will, will occur, and then the, the subgroups will occur. And then we'll have our next Safeguard meeting, um, beginning of part of May, where we'll start working on the sub-teams for the other. Things such as business, of which I'm involved in another, so, um, and then also they're off trying to gather all the in-kind. You know, spreadsheets and data for all the participants to be able to report out to the, um, um, to the, uh, to the team, so, that's it.
Great, thanks. Vice Chair Barnes.
Just a couple of plugs, cause it's not exactly a meeting recap, but a reminder that the Easter egg hunt, due to weather, uh, has been moved to Saturday, April eighteenth. At Wasserman Park, starting at ten A M, going on till eleven thirty, and it'll be broken out by age group. Um, if you're looking for information on the Nattica Day Camp, there's information on the website, as well as already a preliminary, um, a pretty full schedule of the summer concert series. Coming up, and we would just like to say summer in a sentence and mean it. But, uh, if you want more information about, uh, the activities and, and functions of the Parks and Rec Department, go to MerrimackParksAndRec.org. All the information and pertinent details are there.
Wonderful. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll move on. Takes us to item number eleven, public comments on agenda items. What say you, Mr. Goodman?
Meeting adjourned.
So, we will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one hyphen A. Colon, three, Roman numeral two, A, B, and C, made by Ms. Gualyumi, seconded by Mr. Schneider. How do you vote, Ms. Gualyumi? How do you vote, Mr. Schneider?
In favor.
Mr. Powell?
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor, so the motion passes five, zero, zero. Thank you, everyone, good night.